President.
Councilmember Stevens.
President.
Councilmember Westco.
President.
Mayor Kirkoff.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. Would everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we do have a presentation this evening, but I do not see the person who is receiving the presentation in the audience, so we'll delay that. Move on to personal appearances, which we have none, and then on to staff reports. Staff reports, please.
Good evening. I'll call on Mike Crass to make the standard report from Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn, Mr. Mayor, Member of the Council. In addition to my written report, just wanted to let everyone, remind everyone that the contractor is working on the curb replacement on Lucy Webb Road this week, and please use extra caution as you're going through the work zone and the detours. Our street preservation project is going to be starting shortly, and August ninth, on Saturday, is the annual mobile event for the Household Hazardous Waste Collection. This year's program is going to be a slightly reduced program. It's going to be what they refer to as ABOP, which is antifreeze batteries, motor oil, and paint, and that is going to be at the Belton, Belton Freshman Center. That concludes my report.
Councilmember Westco.
I was actually walking in Ward Four today, and I talked to the citizen. They're at the corner of Egrit and either Finch or Raven. It's like the 700 block of Egrit, and they were saying that their sidewalk is actually starting to sink, and as it's doing that, there, a lot of their soil is being washed away, and they didn't know if that was a city issue and, you know, that if it was going to cause the sidewalks to buckle, but if you would take a look at that.
Thank you. Noted.
Councilmember Morehead.
Mr. Crass, back to the Household Hazardous Waste Pickup. You said that was August ninth?
Yes.
Okay, and if somebody had like computer components, like monitors, TVs, is that, what is that kind of in the realm of the hazardous waste, and is that to be at the Belton, what, Belton Freshman Center?
No, this, that, that would, they would have to take that to one of the other locations, either at Kansas City or in Lee Summit.
Okay.
And we have flyers for that. This year's event is strictly restricted to antifreeze batteries, oil, and paint.
Great, thanks.
And if I could dovetail off of that, about every two years, there is an electronic drop-off event that, I believe the last one, Cass County, actually sponsored it, and the key with that event is they have to go through kind of a background check certification process because a lot of times when you're turning those electronic items in, they don't really know where they're ending up. So they have to certify where all of these, these items are actually going through that event. And I remember Cass County had that event. I think it was either late spring last year or the fall before, but we can check with them also to find out when the next time one of those is going to be sponsored.
Councilmember Kellon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any cost associated for the citizens? I mean, we pay per capita to belong to that, that program for the electronics, the monitors and such. Is there any cost that is associated with that if we, as citizens, take those to the two drop sites that exist?
As far as the electronic one, if they, if they are taking the electronics at those two locations, there is no cost to the citizens because we participate in the HHW program. It's just not locally here. They have to drive their items to it.
What, do you know what the requirements are for our citizens to show proof of residency? Because, like I say, I think it's important that, you know, we vote on this pretty much every year in the budget, and we vote to fund this or not fund this per capita. You know, what, what do the folks need to, to get their benefit of their tax dollars?
Sure.
Driver's license or a water bill? And Mike, help me out. Does Lee Summit still require an appointment ahead of time? I think they do, but the Kansas City drop zone, you can go anytime they're open.
Kansas City, Kansas City doesn't require an appointment on Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, but other times they do.
Okay, thank you.
And if the council is okay with it, I'd like to roll back the agenda just a few items to presentations and awards. So Ms. Amban, if you'll meet me down here. So proclamation, whereas the National Speech and Debate Association Tournament is the largest academic competition in the world, attended by top competing students from 109 districts tournaments, and whereas Raymore Peculiar High School student Andrea Amban won the national championship in the original orator contest on June 20th, 2014, and whereas Ms. Amban competed and excelled through self-discipline, dedication, and talent, and is deserving of public recognition for accomplishments and outstanding success, and whereas Ms. Amban is the first Raymore Peculiar High School student to receive a national title in the National Speech Debate, Debate Tournament, Association Tournament, now therefore I, Peter Kirkoff, Mayor of the City of Raymore, do hereby proclaim July 28th, 2014, is Andrea Amban Day. Congratulations. Yeah, and to Mike, your word, please. Thank you.
Um, this means a lot to me, and I thank you guys very much, and I'm proud that I can represent the city that I'm from so well, and hopefully I'll have more to do in the future, and we'll be able to put our names on it. So thank you.
Okay, and we'll go back to continuing with staff reports.
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Joe Willarth to make a legal report.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn. Congratulations to the recipient. That's an outstanding award, said by one who speaks for a living in public. I had the privilege of going to the Missouri Municipal League as your representative the weekend before last in Tantara, and Mr. Fearborn thought it would be a good idea for me to update you just briefly on some of the topics discussed. First of all, with respect to the telecom lawsuits, you'll recall a year ago, House Bills 331 and 345 pretty well struck down the ability of local cities to regulate telecom towers by zoning regulations. The group of cities backed by the MML filed a suit to strike down that legislation, which was successful, and it was enjoined, and so we continue to regulate telecom facilities, except the power of the telecom industry was indicated again this year in the legislature in which they rapidly passed replacement bills, which have now been already signed by the governor and put into effect. And the group of cities now in the MML are weighing a nod or they're not. It's worth trying to bring another legal attack against these current bills. They cured many of the problems the first ones were struck down on, and candidly, we're really looking at whether it's a wise use of funds to, to battle this industry since obviously their legislative influence is great. I'll keep you posted if any decision is made. None has been made yet, and the attack would probably be brought before the bills went into effect would be at the end of this month. A second session I found of interest, you know, one of the advantages of having an old city attorney is he has a lot of experience in some legal matters, but a weakness is that he's not on Twitter or blogs or whatever, and there is a, there was a training session on the use of Twitter and blogs by public officials, and watching whether or not does this constitute the creation of a public record, and to be very careful about your use of those things, whether it's for your personal use, or is it your professional or city-related use. And I realize now there was a reference to some guidelines, and I'm going to try to look into that material and get it to Mr. Fearborn to see if this is worth pursuing further, but I would kind of throw an admonition at you. One of the other boards I represented got into some litigation, and there's been some electronic discovery served on them to get to their own personal computers about communications they have made and made with respect to this, and that concerns me greatly. Third, there was an environmental update by Daniel Shore of Gilmore and Bell, and the council is well aware, we're right into that field, and we'll be bringing you stormwater regulation litigation. I already have stream setback regulations, so right out at the cutting edge, and we're ahead of some of the groups presenting about that topic. Fourth, there was the annual update of the law, and it's required on land use cases, and that's required reading for the Planning Commission, and I've gotten a set of that to Mr. Catterett to distribute to them, and I'll give one to Mr. Fearborn, who can distribute it to the mayor. Any council representative who'd like to see that material. Some of you will find it boring, some of you will find it fascinating reading. And then the most important thing to announce is after the many years I have gone down there, this is the first year I have ever been a co-champion of the golf tournament, and this is a credit to Sean Flynn of Gilmore and Bell of St. Louis, who was able to drag in a true man scramble, me, to the level of champion. Incredible accomplishment on his part. So thank you for the opportunity to go on.
Finally, sir, just a few things. A reminder to the council that the joint meeting with Peculiar and the county and the school district is on Wednesday, August 20th, at 6:30, here in council chambers, which should be an interesting and somewhat cramped affair, since by then we will have filing cabinets across the back of the council chambers as we begin our recarpeting project. If you could just let Ms. Warner know, anytime before the Friday prior, if you are going to be in attendance. Our work session next week is a three-topic work session. First, we'll be bringing the goals to the city council for your review, the quarterly goals report. Second, Mr. Catterett will be bringing the sidewalk gap plan before the council for your review. We need to revisit that. It's, we've reached the deadline, and it'll be time to discuss the public hearing process that will be associated with those. And third, we will be bringing the RFQ forward for the executive search firm for you all's discussion and continued calendaring. Finally, want to talk about the service awards that we realized here in the last quarter. Ms. Kristy Samborski, one of our dispatchers, has been with us for five years. Mr. Steve Welch, our operations manager, and Ms. Lori Crandall, one of our engineering techs, have been with us for 10 years each. I myself celebrated 10 years last Monday with you all. And then of incredible note, Mr. Andy Elliston, you may have noticed his picture on the front of the E! News, celebrates 35 years with the city this past quarter. I actually pulled a picture of myself to take to his presentation, which was the same year he, or the same year and month he started, I was having my high school graduation picture taken. He got more attention than my picture. That concludes staff reports.
Any questions of staff? Okay, we'll move on. There are no committee reports, so I'll entertain motion to dispose of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, we approve the consent agenda as presented, to include Item A, city council minutes from July 14th, 2014. Item B, the reappointment of Jenny Riggs to the tree board. Item C, the appointment of Jenny Sapola to the park board. Item D, the appointment of Sheldon Castleman to the park board. And Item E, the acceptance of the 2013 sanitary sewer I and, or II, is that what that is? Oh, sanitary sewer I and I reduction project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All, up, Councilmember Westco.
I just want to thank our, our two park board volunteers for their willingness to serve. We have a lot of important projects ahead of us, and I know that both of your commitment to the community will be very valuable, and your input will be valuable to those projects. So thank you very much for your willingness to serve.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor? One, two, three, four. Motion passes unanimously. Move on to unfinished business. The second reading of Bill 2981 by Title Only.
The second reading of Bill 2981 by Title Only, in ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, approving an agreement with Dana F. Cole &amp; Company, LLP, CPAs, for the 2014 annual audit of financial statements with extensions for the 2015 and 2016 audits.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Give me a second. I got to get there. All right. I move that we approve Bill 2981, the award of contract for auditing services.
Second.
And I'll promise I'll go a little bit slower to give you a chance to scroll down.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
We have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 2981. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. The second reading of Bill 2982 by Title Only.
The second reading of Bill 2982 by Title Only, in ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Bright Construction, Inc., for Owen Good Force Main Point Repair Project, City Project Number 14-197-201, in the amount of $31,880, and authorizing the acting city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 2982, second reading.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 2982, the award of contract for the Owen Good Force Main Point Repair.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 2982. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Morehead.
Mr. Mayor, it's become, I've become aware of a legal conflict, so I must recuse myself.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Opposed? And abstained? Or recused?
It's recused.
Recused, okay. Motion carries. May we have the second reading of Bill 2983 by Title Only?
The second reading of Bill 2983 by Title Only, in ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2014 capital budget.
And I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2983, the budget amendment for the Owen Good Force Main Point Repair.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 2983. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. That takes care of old business. We'll move on to new business, beginning with the 20th Amendment of the Unified Development Code, and staff report on that, please.
Thank you, sir. I would ask Mr. Catterett to make a staff report for us.
Thank you. The proposed 20th Amendment to Unified Development Code is a proposal to establish a new chapter in our UDC on stormwater treatment. This particular item was considered by the Planning Commission at its July 15th meeting. The commission did have some questions concerning that particular UDC amendment, and they did postpone action on that item, and thus it was, it is, no recommendation was submitted to the council to consider this evening, but since we had, had already advertised a public hearing for this evening, thought we should place it on the agenda, see if any public are here to speak on the matter, but simply noted in the agenda item that we will re-advertise for council consideration when the matter is ready to come before you, so it would, would be set up for a, for a public hearing in the future, but since I had already advertised, we thought we should leave it on the agenda.
Questions of staff? But I don't need to open a public hearing, or I do need to open a public hearing?
I thought Mr. Catterett indicated we were going to check to see if anyone from the public was present for it.
Is there anybody here from the public that would like to speak on this? Since there isn't any, I won't open a public hearing. And we'll move on to the next item. Thank you. This does require a public hearing. I have the first reading of Bill 2987 by Title Only, please.
The first reading of Bill 2987 by Title Only, in ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, amending the zoning map from Cass County Rural Residential District to RR Rural Residential District Lot 1 in Willow Hills subdivision, Raymore, Cass County, Missouri.
Thank you. I'll open up the public hearing by asking for a staff report.
Thank you, sir. I would ask Mr. Catterett to make the staff report.
Thank you. Bill 2987 proposes to establish a city zoning classification for Lot 1 of Willow Hills. Lot 1 is located at 303 East Gore Road. Since this is a rezoning matter, it does require a public hearing that was advertised for this evening, and I do need to enter into the record, the notices that were sent to all the adjoining landowners, the notice of publication in the Journal, our Unified Development Code, the application, our growth management plan, and the staff report. This particular Lot 1 property was annexed into the city back on, on June 23rd, and the annexation agreement with the property order authorized the city to file this action for establishing the zoning upon the property. I have identified in the staff report the U standards for the rural residential zoning district, as well as the development standards that would apply. There's a total of 30 lots in the subdivision. Currently, 27 of those lots are in the city and have the RR zoning designation. Two of the lots still remain in unincorporated Cass County and remain under Cass County zoning. So with, with the, with the rezoning of this particular property, 28 of the 30 lots would have the RR zoning designation. The Planning Commission submitted proposed findings of fact on this request for your consideration. It was at their July 15th meeting that they voted 7-0 to accept the findings, and for this case, the city council with the recommendation of approval. I have not heard from any of the adjoining landowners regarding this particular request.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Okay, I'll open the floor for public comment. Please identify yourself to the record. Keep your comments to under five minutes. Seeing nobody coming forward, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 2987.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 2987, Willow Hills, Lot 1 rezoning.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 2987. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to Bill 2988, which also requires a public hearing. The first reading of Bill 2988 by Title Only, please.
The first reading of Bill 2988 by Title Only, in ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, approving a conditional use permit for a senior living facility for land located along the East Outer Road in the Timber Trail subdivision, a subdivision located in Section 18, Township 46 North, Range 32 West, in Raymore, Cass County, Missouri.
Thank you, and I'll open the public hearing by asking if the applicant is here. The applicant that would come forward, state their name and address for the record, and present their proposal.
My name is John Burkle with Hunt Midwest. Address is 8200 Outlook Lane, Prairie Village, Kansas, 66208. I have some handouts. Can I approach your?
Is, is the mic on?
Is it? Is it? Can you hear me now?
Huh.
Usually I blow these things out. Okay, I'll try that.
Yeah, that's working better.
Okay. Thank you for handing those out. This, this project is for, I, I'm John Burkle. I'm with the, I'm the Director of Real Estate Development for Hunt Midwest. Our proposed project for Benton House is an assisted living community. The submission for this required application for a conditional use permit for the zoning codes and ordinances around assisted living buildings. The Benton House is a partnership between owners Hunt Midwest, Principal Living, and Principal Living out of Georgia. One of the partners, Kyle Dykman, is a local resident of Kansas City, and therefore offers an opportunity for us to develop with them in the Kansas City market. This partnership has currently developed three Benton House properties in the Kansas City area, as Shoal Creek, Lee Summit, and Prairie Village. We currently have two Benton House projects under construction at Tiffany Springs and Blue Springs. We are currently looking forward to two new Benton House projects, as Staley Hills and this proposed project in Raymore. The proposed Benton House will be within the Timber Trails neighborhood along the Outer Road and Future Johnson Drive. Benton House includes both assisted living and memory care options for its residences. The property is a private pay, there is no buy-in, and it, and is on a month-to-month lease. The property, the project finance note requires no tax credit or income restrictions, no TIF tax abatement, no Section 8, or any other financial incentives to be requested. The building is single-story wood frame construction, and does not exceed 40 feet in height. The building is designed as organ ra, organized around two interior courtyards for the assisted living and memory, memory care neighborhoods. The courtyard amenities creates the opportunity for all rooms to have natural light and exterior views. The average age of our tenants is around 84 years of age. The facility is quiet use, very low traffic, and there are about five residences with cars at any time. This is based upon our partnership experience of constructing and managing over 20 of these properties. Benton House provides a private bus service, staff and staff for residents shopping, doctor's appointments, pharmaceutical trips, entertainment, and other access needs. Benton House staff is between 30 and 35, with 15 to 18 at the high end of any one shift. The state certification of need has been approved for the project in March of this year. If, according to the handouts, I want to just go through a couple of the design amenities. The design of the project is constructed of quality, long staff, long-lasting, and high-end finishes. The building's architectural design has a timeless quality, using traditional enduring design elements and materials, stucco, stone, and brick. Also included is a lot of well-maintained landscape. This is due in part to the nature of the tenants, as also continuing market of the property. Page one and two, the exterior includes distinctive design elements and quality materials, porches, columns, trim, trellises, cupolas, and dormas, as well as entry monuments, signage, and an entry portico chair. The building's interior include quality, then page three, includes quality detailing and attention to spaces, including the entry and common areas. These areas are spacious, well-designed, with inviting architectural features, vaults, crown molding, and high-quality wall coverings and carpet. These areas also include a good use of indirect and direct lighting, also a lot of windows and many, and a lot of the seating areas. This shows, page four has a, a good picture of the country kitchen. This is designed for everyday use, for needs for snacks, also supporting opportunities for families to visit and cook together, cookies, those kinds of things, and, and meals. There's also, this next slide down, has private dining room to support special visits, meals for private family events, birthdays, and special occasions. Page five shows the living room and the dining room, both views, in, both have views into the courtyards. There's two separate courtyards there. The owners, one of the owners is a piano player and is, is, has made the baby grand piano part of its staple. For those who don't play, it does take an iPod, and it will play itself, which is a wonderful feature I wish I had as a kid. The activity areas have visual connections, I'm sorry, page six is the Beacon Hill, we call the Beacon Hill neighborhood, which is the memory care neighborhood, and it has controlled access as well as the, as well as the neighborhood exterior courtyard. These activity areas have visual connections to all of the room doors, mini kitchenettes in each rooms, except for the Beacon Ne, Neighborhood, courtyards, activities, plantings, and fountains. For the project review, this is 47, this, this is broken up into two phases. The first phase is 47 assisted living suites, 12, 12 memory care suites for a total of 59 units. That's approximately 42,000 square feet. The two courtyards, commercial kitchen, and hairdressing areas are also included into this first phase. The second phase includes 14 memory care suites for a total of 73 suites, approximately 92,000 square feet for a total of 51, I'm sorry, approximately 92,000 square feet for a total of 51,000 square foot total in the, in the building. This addition of the memory care includes its own courtyards. No additional site work is required to do this addition. The preparations are all made in Phase 1. We are asking for a conditional use permit for the 73 units of assisted living and memory care, and a community, and a care community with no time limit set on that conditional use permit. Our schedule, our schedule, we are scheduled to be back in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission in early September for a site plan review, and we look forward to start construction, we estimate, in late September. Our next meeting with the city will be the Board of Zoning Adjustments, August 12th. Is there any questions?
Questions of the applicant? Councilmember Westco?
Between the applicant and staff, who is responsible for putting the road in? John, is it Johnston, is it Johnston Drive? Is that the, is that your organization?
We are working with, we are working right now with, yes, we will. We will be, I don't remember the specifics of that. We're going to be putting in part of the, half of the drive with one side of the curbs, if you could help me out. I appreciate it.
Yes, the, the, it is correct. The developer will be installing, constructing Johnston Drive. It will be done in phases as adjacent construction occurs. So for the opening of this particular facility, they'll only build Johnston Drive along the south property line. So the only access to this would be off of the Outer Road. You would not be able to get to this property yet from, from Dean Avenue. What they'll do is construct the roadway in segments as adjacent development occurs. Since this particular section of the road will only serve this, this one lot- Since this particular section of the road will only serve this one lot, we will allow an interim improvement, meaning that they'll probably put curbs on the north side of the street and improve the streets for this two-way traffic, but not to its full width that would be needed upon ultimate development of that area. So again, we allow the construction to be done in phases.
And then eventually, will a traffic control device be required at that intersection? Or...
Certainly not short. The traffic study that was done for Timber Trails did not show any signalization either at the outer road or Dean Avenue at Johnston.
Councilmember Morehead?
Question for the applicant. I noticed when I was reviewing the planning and zoning minutes, when you were before planning and zoning, there was mention of a possible variance to reduce the number of parking lots required for the property. Before I ask my question, I'll preface that I have several family members in facilities. And while I understand the rationale of a lot of the residents here don't have cars and won't be driving, as a visitor and with someone who would be receiving guests, one of my biggest complaints I've had is that a lot of facilities don't have enough parking. Is that something that is, that you guys have weighed? Is that up for discussion? Are you flexible? What's your position on that?
Well, absolutely. This, the parking requirement is one per bedroom or one per unit. So we have seventy-three, and the staff is between fifteen and twenty at any given time, or fifteen to eighteen at any given time. From the experience that our partnership principal assisted living, they have found that some people will come in the assisted living with a car, but within a year, they end up not having it or not using it. So that number goes way, way down. We are asking for a reduction from seventy-three to sixty-two, still feeling as though that is plenty for the required guest parking as well as staff parking. So it's just something that reduces the amount of runoff, it reduces the amount of maintenance and costs and things like that as well. They, we're taking the lead from them of how many parking spaces that they require and looking at the other twenty Benton Houses that they have developed and they've come up with that number. We'll be going through that with the Board of Zoning appeals and getting into more specifics examples with that.
Councilmember Kellard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing that I see here, and Mr. Wesco has already asked his question as far as access, and it'll be coming off of the outer road. What worries me is that the only access there is there. I'm worried about a extended response time from our emergency responders. I guess my question would be, is, on your staff, on the staff there, will there be twenty-four-hour emergency capability in case the residents need it? The reason why I'm asking this is, long-term down the road, when will we... This for staff also, when will we be expecting to complete Johnston Drive all the way down to Dean? That way, we don't have to go all the way around, either into Belton, down to around the Burger King, or way down south around the roundabout to get to this area.
Jim, what is the schedule on Johnson?
The schedule would be entirely dependent upon the future development of other phases of the Timber Trails subdivision. I do not, I do not believe final determination has been made by South Metropolitan Fire Protection District on perhaps a second access. I know there's been discussions concerning that, and I don't know if the applicant can get into that, but that is still under review from a staff standpoint because we should definitely share the same concern. And I know South Metro was looking at that, but I'm not prepared to provide that this evening.
Other questions of the applicant?
Sure. Staff is well-equipped to deal with medical conditions. They have memory care, people who are specialized in dealing with the memory care as well as the assisted living. The staff is well-trained and they can take care of things until that emergency vehicles would arrive. As far as what I do know about the fire access, we have provided a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree around the building access for fire in the fire department. We're working on the final site plan right now, and that has been submitted, and we'll be going through that supplemental for final plan in a future meeting.
Right. Other questions of the applicant? Is there a question? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the explanation. You just segued into my next question. Is there plans for this? You know, and I know this is going to go through the planning and zoning before it comes back to us, and all of these questions will be answered then, but I'm going to ask this now. Is there plans for fire suppression, fire central, fire extinguishing system?
Everything is built with fire suppression. This is a Type B building.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Huber?
Yes, you're asking for a conditional use, and normally, under conditional use, we put time limits on it. I think I heard you say no time limit, ad infinitum, more or less. So is that correct, then, that you do not want any time limit on this at all? Because you're making quite an investment, and for that, just to run for, you know, seven, eight, or ten years didn't seem feasible to me.
Yes, we can't do that. That would be, that would be potentially restricting the building if that was to change. That would potentially make the building unusable.
So you wanted, as I'd say, ad infinitum, you wanted to go on forever, then?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other question, or councilmember?
And this is a question for Legal. Can we issue a conditional use permit with no time restriction?
Yes, you can, and we have in the past.
Now, do we need to specifically state that in...
No, if you do not put a time limit, you will assume that it is open-ended. If conditions that are established on it are violated, it could come back for reconsideration at that point. But other than that, we wouldn't bring it back just based on the expiration of time if you don't put one on it.
Other questions of the applicant? Councilmember?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joe...
Well, is this of the applicant?
It is of the applicant, but Joe will probably have to answer it. Under a conditional use permit, typically, I remember that it was not transferable to a buyer or an inheritance. Do we need to worry about that here in this, in this case? Because...
My understanding, there's not been any condition put on transferability on this, was there, Mr. Catterett?
That's correct, none recommended, and the conditional use permit is transferable to other owners, or subsequent owners.
Unless you put restriction on it, it will be assumed to be transferable.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you. We'll move on to staff report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Catterett?
Thank you. The Bill Twenty-nine eighty-eight that is before you this evening is for the conditional use permit, and it's for a senior living facility. That's been, would be the proposed use for this property. That does require the conditional use permit. Again, this is located just to the southwest of the Hunt Midwest Timber Trails Townhome Development, and would have frontage along the east outer road, but would be accessed off of a portion of Johnston Drive being constructed. This particular property is currently zoned R-three A.P., which is our multiple-family residential planned district. Initially, this property was zoned for future townhome development. They, Hunt Midwest, constructed the first phase of townhomes. The property was subsequently approved for apartments to be located on the undeveloped land area. This particular conditional use permit would eliminate that portion of the land area from apartment use. The surrounding property would still have the ability to have multiple-family land use. This particular request does require a public hearing that was advertised for this evening. I need to enter to the record the notices that we sent to the adjoining property owners. I noticed publication in the Journal, the Unified Development Code, the application, our growth management plan, and the staff report. Again, the zoning was established back in two thousand and four. That's when the preliminary plat was approved. The plat was amended in two thousand and nine, again, which replaced the townhome use with the apartments. A conceptual site plan was submitted for your review and included in this packet. The conceptual site plan, again, is only for the CUP use. As the applicant indicated, they will be submitting a final plat and a formal site plan to be considered by the Plating Commission. The development standards that apply to this site are listed in your staff report. Again, I mentioned the access being off of the outer road. That is an access controlled by MODOT. MODOT would determine if any improvements would be necessary for the outer road as part of this development. And again, from a city code standpoint, they would be required to ultimately construct Johnston Drive to full standard. Full standard is not needed for this one development. They would be allowed to do a partial improvement of the roadway, but it would provide full access to the main entrance as well as the rear service entrance to the site. It was, the question did come up about time limits. The City Council has in the past established a time limit for a conditional use permit. It's been done very infrequently. We haven't been establishing time limits for conditional use permits for several years. And then secondly, noted about the particular use. The use is being approved not directly for Hunt Midwest, but for the land. We're approving it for this tract of property, so it doesn't matter who owns it. What we're doing is approving the use for the property itself. Hunt Midwest is showing you what they propose for the property. But again, once the conditional use permit's approved, unless you place a condition, the use is allowed there indefinitely, can be transferred to a subsequent landowner. The Plating Commission did consider the application. They submitted proposed findings after the public hearing, and in their recommendation, the Commission voted seven-zero to accept those findings and forward this conditional use permit request to the Council with the recommendation of approval, subject to just one condition, and that be the access to the property shall be obtained off of Johnston Drive. We did not want to have any access from an individual lot onto the outer road. The only access that was approved as part of the master plan for Timber Trails onto the outer road was this Johnston Drive access. So that was the only condition they placed. The Plating Commission did not feel it was necessary to do a time limit or restriction to the current ownership. So that concludes staff report.
Questions of staff? Councilmember Huber?
If this is as successful as it appears it could be, what about extensions? Do they have to come up with another building, another five acres? Because when I went on the internet and looked to see what they were doing, most of them had, were just around five acres with this number. And then I think I read somewhere where they would come up with a second house, and is that the way that you foresee this, rather than as an extension, a new building, rather than as an extension for this?
Well, my understanding of what they've submitted with their conceptual plan is they have just two phases for this project. The overall acreage of the property allows the second phase, which is the additional memory care units that the applicant talked about, but it would be attached to the buildings. There's only going to be the one building on this property, and this is, again, the typical layout that they've utilized at several locations within the Kansas City area.
Other questions of staff? I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill Twenty-nine eighty-eight.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill Twenty-nine eighty-eight, the conditional use permit for Benton House of Raymore.
I second it.
Okay. Oh, the public hearing. Thank you. Okay. We'll back up. If there's anybody from the public that would like to come forward and speak on this, please identify yourself for the record and keep your comments to under five minutes. And I'm going to wait an extra long time because I messed up. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Bill Twenty-nine eighty-eight.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill Twenty-nine eighty-eight, conditional use permit for Benton House of Raymore.
And I second it.
Okay. Is there any discussion up here? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Well, I think that's the last public hearing tonight, so I won't mess up anymore. Maybe we have the first reading of Bill Twenty-nine eighty-nine by title only.
The first reading of Bill Twenty-nine eighty-nine by title only, in ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, approving the final plat for Foxwood Plaza Lot Two, a subdivision in the northeast and northwest quarters of Section Seventeen Township Forty-six North, Range Thirty-two West, in Raymore, Cast County, Missouri.
Staff report, please.
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Mr. Catterett.
Thank you. Bill Twenty-nine eighty-nine proposes the Foxwood Plaza Lot Two final plat. The land area is located to the south and the west of the existing Culvers Restaurant. This land area is actually currently platted. This would be a replat of the property. The boundary line of this lot does not change. What is changing with this particular final plat is the elimination of a portion of an existing water line easement and a placement of a new easement. This part of the project, and you see some site work going on out there even today, there is a relocation of a water main that's occurring, and with that relocation, the easements need to be shifted. So the new line is protected by easement, and this final plat is the document that would accomplish that particular action. With that, the Plating Commission submitted proposed findings on this final plat application, and at their July fifteenth meeting, they did vote seven-zero to accept those findings and forward this case to the Council with a recommendation of approval.
Questions of staff? Councilmember Wesco?
Was this the initial one that we did, that we did the replat on in hopes of drawing the national chain?
It's the same subdivision, but it's the opposite side of Mott Drive. That first replat, the Foxwood Plaza Lot One is the development you're talking about, which is on the east side of Mott Drive. This particular replat is for the land on the west side of Mott Drive. It is property that's already zoned, zoned, planned, and in development, but for commercial use utilization. And again, it's the undeveloped land area surrounding Culvers, and the developer is wanting to bring the site to be, in essence, pad-ready, so basically level out the site. There's a large dirt mound, stockpile on the property. All that will be leveled out, so the property is more marketable. And with that, they are relocating the water line as part of that project. Scott Drive used to connect through there, and that was closed when Culvers was built. So they're eliminating Scott Drive, filling it in, and again, making this one level path site. I don't believe they have any identified uses at this time, although I do know they have users looking at the property.
Other questions of staff? I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill Twenty-nine eighty-nine.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill Twenty-nine eighty-nine, Foxwood Plaza Lot Two final plat.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the first reading of Bill Twenty-nine eighty-nine. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to first reading of Bill Twenty-nine eighty-six by title only.
The first reading of Bill Twenty-nine eighty-six by title only, in ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Oshner Hair and Hair LLC in an amount not to exceed five thousand eight hundred fifty dollars for design services for the Roundabout Decorative Feature Project, City Project Number Fourteen dash one six zero dash three zero two.
Staff report, please.
Thank you, sir. I would ask Mr. Crass make the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Fairborn, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item is being brought forward by the Roundabout Welcome and Feature Committee. Staff has been assisting the committee in the procurement of professional services for design of the Roundabout feature, the center feature. We followed our standard request for qualifications process. Recently, the committee met with a representative of Oshner Hair and Hair to discuss a final scope of services. This contract is for an initial engagement to design three concept designs for the project and cost estimates. And upon a selection of a design concept, another, a contract amendment would be negotiated based on that scope of services for final design and brought forward for consideration. So staff and the committee recommend award of this contract in the amount of five, this initial contract, in the amount of five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Questions of staff? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill Twenty-nine eighty-six.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill Twenty-nine eighty-six, the Roundabout Design Services.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the first reading of Bill Twenty-nine eighty-six. Is there... Is there any discussion? Councilmember Stevens?
I'm not really for this. I can't see spending fifty-eight hundred dollars for pay someone to decide something that we can't. I'd like to propose we take it back to committee and figure it out.
There is a, what is your motion?
That we do the design ourselves. I kind of had something in mind. I thought a wind sculptor would be real nice there. It wouldn't cost a hell of a lot of money.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Hold on for a second.
Okay. Is there a second? Your motion dies for lack of a second. We're back to the original motion to approve the first reading of Bill twenty-nine eighty-six. Councilmember Kellogg, did you want the word?
I will state that I support this as part of the committee, so I'm kind of biased and jaded. And I'm very proud of what we brought forth, and I hope we get enough support to go forward on this. I do want to state that this is a project that just cannot be nilly-willy put together with PVC piping and a little bit of quick set concrete. We're talking about what we hope to be in the future, a major intersection and a busy area that hopefully a lot of people are going to be using. For something to be standing there in four-by-fours or PVC or things that can be bought at our local Lowe's concerns me about being a safety feature. This is going to require some professional engineering, some professional contracting, and I totally support this bill. Thank you.
Councilmember Huber and then Morehead.
I had some questions regarding the cost on this. I know when we originally started, we could put a sign up there, I mean, traffic signal for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. This one cost us almost, what, four, five hundred thousand when we got finished. Now we're going to add this, was it five thousand, to get an idea of what we want. Have we put any dollar amount on what we want to put in there? In other words, do the people that are doing this, coming up with three ideas, they know they have to stay within ten thousand, twenty thousand, fifty thousand? Or what, have we set any limits for that? We've set a limit for the design that they can come up with, I mean, their ideas. But have we set any limits that they have to meet in order to do it? Because we're going to end up with, am I wrong, somewhere around $700,000 for a street? That kind of concerns me just a little bit.
If I remember right, the budget for the welcoming feature was on the order of twenty-five thousand total or something on that order?
The amount remaining in the fund was twenty-five thousand. I believe that the committee gave the contractor some very specific directions relative to the monetary amounts and some targets.
Okay. Councilmember, I'm going to go out of order because Kellogg was on the committee. Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you for the indulgence. What I will add to Mr. Fairborn's comments there is, and rest of the committee, please join in or jump in if I'm wrong. We gave specific, not recommendations, but directions to go back and bring us forth three different concepts at three different levels of money. And that's part of when they come back, once this is, that's what this contract is for, is for those services. Once they get that done, they will come back, they will meet with the committee, and the contract reads two times with the subcommittee, and then one time with the council. And then if there's more required, that's up for debate and regular or ongoing negotiations. So this is just for those, that professional design services of them bringing forth three different concepts that they feel might be able to fit in that area. Three totally distinct, different projects.
Was there any other comment from the committee? Councilmember Morehead?
Okay, I just, as far as approving this or not, we're talking about a company providing design services, not the finished product. The idea here is fifty-eight hundred dollars is well within our budget that we already have allocated. And they're coming back to recommendations where our committee can then pick and choose, have input. And the only reason why I did not second Councilmember Stevens' motion was because I think there's still an opportunity at that point to have input, and that if the committee at that point feels we could do it in-house, we could pull it back. So there's a lot of flexibility here. We're just talking about somebody bringing ideas before us. I like the idea of not putting a dollar figure on what this company can do. As far as proposals, that's for us to consider, and I have faith that our feature committee will be able to weigh that through this. Now, as far as the general putting something at the Roundabout, I don't tie that together with the development of the Roundabout Road itself. We are, one of the separate discussion points of this was we were looking for something that would be an identifiable marker for people to see and be welcomed into this city. It would be something that we could equally be discussing even if we had a traffic light there or any other thing. This is an entryway into Raymore. We're wanting something, as the committee says, it's a welcoming feature committee. The fact that Roundabout's tied to it, I don't think directly ties to the road itself. So I don't want to put any limitation on this committee at this point. The fifty-eight hundred dollars is reasonable for design services, and I hope we can proceed with this.
Councilmember Abdellguad?
Another important thing to consider is that the Roundabout Committee has been meeting for quite some time. We spent many hours working on a design on our own. We shared that with the council, and then we sent that out to artists and architects in the area to see if they could come and build our design for us, and no one was interested. So we're kind of stepping back a minute, saying, okay, this isn't something we can design and get someone to come and build for us. That's not the way it works.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll opine a little further. And I've switched gears as far as, you know, and you've heard probably the most rhetoric out of me about the Roundabout, and I've switched my gears, and I'm no longer doing that, at least not publicly. My point is, is that if we didn't have that Roundabout, we wouldn't be going through this right now here tonight. So that's my opinion there, and, you know, we didn't have to put it in there, but it's there. And, you know, Mr. Kellogg here, Mr. Anti-Roundabout, wants to do something to make this city a shining example as to what we can be. Nobody else in the area is willing or wanting to pony up and do something this distinct and unique, and this, I think this can set us apart and add some future culture to the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Wesco?
As one of the biggest supporters of Roundabout, I actually thank Kevin's position of wanting to make it beautiful. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. You know, and I acknowledge Mr. Stevens, his, you know, his ideas that we want to do something simple and, you know, have the council do it. And I still think that there's an opportunity for that input. It's just, I see this organization actually being able to tell us, okay, it's going to cost this much if we do this. You know, one of the questions we had asked is, okay, if we do it in steel, how much is it, or if we do it in glass? And we asked all these questions, you know, that is beyond the scope of what we could do. You know, we still have to be able to ask that of a professional, and that's what these people provide to us, is that level of expertise that's just not in-house.
Other discussion? Councilmember Huber, did you want it?
I was going to say, we actually have four entries into the city of Raymore. And how are we going to decide which one we want to make the fanciest? Or are we going to try to tie these all in so that we have four of them that are similar? Or what are we going to do? I mean, this is more than just-
Well, we'd have to install three more Roundabouts.
Well, that's what I'm talking about. What I'm afraid of-
I like it.
What I'm afraid of is you're going to get Roundabout crazy, and every street's going to have a Roundabout or somewhere like that. So-
Councilmember-
I just wanted to know that, is this going to stand alone, or is it going to be part of an overall landscaping plan?
I think that would have to be the choice of the council. Councilmember Morehead?
Actually, to attempt to answer that question, is one of the open-ended questions I have is to see if that's a possibility. If this is done well and we like it, then maybe we do keep this, our feature committee together, and we look at other opportunities. I mean, one of the biggest things that I hear from even members here on this council is we want to properly display this community, and there's nothing wrong with exploring this. I mean, if we're going to spend money, we might as well get a return on investment on it. And we want to make sure, while we're not trying to be divisive with surrounding communities, I like the idea of saying it's okay to say, hey, welcome to Raymore. You're here in Raymore now. And Councilmember Huber, I would pick on you a moment and say, you mentioned you didn't want a monument sign to look like a headstone. Well, we do have one of those here on fifty-eight, and that's one of the things that I've mentioned before, that do we want to look at a possibility of replacing that as well? So I think you've asked a very good question, and I think it's something for our feature committee to continue on as we do this.
Councilmember Boehner, and then Kellogg?
As a design professional myself, I look at the sum that we're proposing to pay for their services, and I look at the caliber of professional in the resume and in the package that they sent us. And I look at the three options that they're contracted to provide, and we're getting an enormous bang for the buck, for them to provide three options from some very high caliber designers that are lauded not only locally but nationally.
Thank you, Councilmember Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to kind of add on to what Mr. Wesco just said to Mrs. Huber, I'll kind of, with the pleasure of the mayor. I'm sorry.
Whatever it is, it's contagious.
What did I call you? The Roundabout Feature Committee has discussed that, you know, as far as way back in the preliminary first meetings. We even discussed, you know, this being a jump-off part, a jump-off point to hopefully grow this throughout the city. There's been discussion from the Parks Board or the Parks Director, and we as council have even taken this up as far as for an art board, art commission board, that, you know, could possibly take over this or that. And also, just, you know, we discussed that, you know, and we are all council members, you know, and I think I can speak for Mrs. Abdellguad and Mr. Wesco, that they are just as passionate about this as I am, as far as seeing this through and the future of this. So, yeah, you're right, there are four different entries. But right now, what we are looking at is a starting point, something that we can identify and then grow off of that.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Holman?
I just have a boring question of staff, if that's okay. Mr. Catterett, I noticed in the scope of services document, I think it's the third paragraph down, it talks about, they don't include any fees with obtaining base map information provided by the city. I'm assuming since there's no comment to that, that that would not be an issue with us. Is that a correct assumption?
No problem at all.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion. I'm going to double check. We do have a motion, don't we?
Correct, sir.
Good, good. I made a mark here that said we had a motion, but we have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill twenty-nine eighty-six. All in favor? One, two, three, four. Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to the first reading of Bill twenty-nine eighty-four by title only.
The first reading of Bill twenty-nine eighty-four by title only, in ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Midwest Digital Systems to purchase and install a security camera system upgrade for an amount not to exceed $27,985, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Thank you. Staff report?
Thank you, sir. The approved fiscal year 2014 budget does include an amount of $30,000 to upgrade the city hall security camera system that's both interior and exterior. Accordingly, staff did issue a request for proposal, calling for proposals to conduct this work. Seven proposals were received. Midwest Digital Systems was the low bidder for those proposals at the $27,985. Staff reviewed the prices submitted by the vendor, checked the references provided by the vendor, and found them all satisfactory. Staff does recommend award of contract Midwest Digital Systems for the security camera system purchase and installation here in the city hall facility. That concludes staff reports, sir.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill twenty-nine eighty-four.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill twenty-nine eighty-four, security camera system for city hall.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the first reading of Bill twenty-nine eighty-four. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. And may we have the reading of Resolution fourteen forty-three by title only?
The reading of Resolution fourteen dash forty-three by title only, a resolution of the city of Raymore, Missouri, accepting the recommendations of the License Tax Review Committee to amend the license tax rate used for calculating the license tax on building contractors relative to Chapter six oh five, Article two, exercise tax for development that generates new traffic and adopting the eighth edition Trip Generation Manual and Trip Generation Rate Table for use in making this calculation.
Staff report, please.
Thank you, sir. The License Tax Review Committee met on June thirtieth to receive the License Tax Review annual report from staff for the calendar year 2013. In 2007, the committee agreed to the concept that was proposed by staff of making incremental annual increases to the license tax by the amount of the construction cost index for the Kansas City area to account for inflation rather than considering larger increases every few years. Accordingly, the committee voted to move forward to the city council's staff recommendation that the council increase the current license tax rate by the construction cost index for May 2013 to May 2014 of 1.029 percent effective November first, 2014, and to adopt the eighth edition Trip Generation Manual and Rate Table used to calculate this license tax. That eighth edition Generation Manual and Trip Table are too large to place into your packet. They are available for review by the city council and by interested citizens in the License Tax Administrator's Office at any time. The resolution for the staff recommendation has been prepared accordingly.
Questions of staff? Councilmember Morehead?
Mr. Fairborn, I was reviewing the report provided in the packet by the committee. I noticed that they mentioned on June 2013, the License Tax Committee voted to recommend an increase. Could you remind us, how did the council vote on this issue last year? Did we approve the increase recommended?
They did vote to approve the increase.
Other questions of staff? Councilmember Abdellguad?
You said, well, it says in the memo, since 2008. So this has been increased at the amount of inflation every year since 2008?
That is correct. It was the thinking of staff when we made the recommendation to the committee. Before 2008, we had not addressed the issue of the license tax for a considerable amount of time, and we hit the contractors with a very, very large increase immediately, I might add, after one of the developers had brought in a fairly large project, and they ended up being subjected to it. Whereas a month earlier, had somebody been bringing something in, they would not have had that increase. So the thinking was that smaller increases that do reflect and go back to a particular inflation rate, that was the thinking of staff when we brought it forward to the committee.
Other questions of staff? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the read of Resolution fourteen forty-three.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution fourteen forty-three, License Tax Committee Recommendations Approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second to approve Resolution fourteen forty-three. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Huber?
I noticed that ten years ago, it was only twelve fifty, and that- That it was only twelve fifty, and now it's gone up to eighteen thirty-nine. And then on the businesses, it's gone from three hundred, I mean, from three, yes, three hundred to four hundred and ninety. We have a lot of fees that we put on businesses to come in to Raymore and also to homes. It's true that we are still getting a lot of building going on, but it seems to me that we are getting fee happy because not only are we charging it, but then the fire district also charges, so that you're almost doubling up these fees on people. And I think our fees are too high, and I'm going to vote against it just because I think we are- we are, and we have continued to raise them, but I don't see that that has been to our benefit, and so I'm going to vote against it.
Councilmember Morehead?
I would only point out that five previous council makeups have voted to approve this. This is only a one percent increase. While it says it is a tax, this really reflects more like a fee, not a tax. I want to point it out also that no residents are being taxed, no residents are paying any fees. These are on developers, when they come in, on developments. So, this is not affecting existing properties, nobody's getting any tax increases. As I stated before, we have had council makeups that even repealed our commercial excise tax, yet also the same people who voted to approve this. This is something that we've done every year. A one percent increase is actually lower than previous year's rates, as far as what has been requested, and I will support this.
Other discussion? Councilmember Abdougouad?
Something else to consider when we look at this is that our excise tax is there to build roads and to maintain our roads, correct?
That's correct.
Yes. So, the number one complaint that I get from citizens is the roads. So, I think that the majority of the citizens in our city will agree that we need to put a little more money into our roads, considering that one of our recent work sessions, we heard the actual number, which was quite large, of how much money we actually need as a city to maintain our roads to the point that people expect. And I know, Ms. Hubach, you also have complained frequently about the roads and needing to keep the roads up here in Raymore, and how important that is to our citizens, and I think this is one very small way that we can maybe make a dent in that large amount that we were told by staff we need to keep our roads up to the standard we would like to have them.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Hubach?
I'd like to know how economic development thinks about these things, because they're trying to bring in business, and we're bringing in, keep raising our fees all the time. And once we get people in, that's something else.
If you'll remember, and it was in the packet, that the businesses that are not, that are coming into Raymore, but not in an area that is covered by economic incentives, do not pay any excise taxes. That was a decision made by the council, I think, two years ago. Businesses that come into Raymore that are in an economic development incentivized area do pay the excise tax. Is there any other discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve the Resolution fourteen forty-three. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five. And opposed? One, two, three. The motion carries. And that takes care of new business. We'll move on to public comments. If you'd like to make a comment, please identify yourself for the record, and keep your comments to a minimum of five minutes. Or maximum of five minutes, not a minimum of five minutes, a maximum of five minutes. Phew, that was close.
Wow.
All right. Seeing nobody coming forward, we'll close the public comments, and we'll go to our list of randomly generated council members. This week, we'll begin mayor-council communication with Councilmember Morehead.
The week I have a lot to say should have been at the end. Okay, first of all, I want to express my congratulations to Andrea Ambam from Raymore Peculiar. My daughter, who was on the forensics team in previous years with her, when I formed my daughter of this, her remark was, that doesn't surprise me. Ms. Ambam is extremely talented, this will not be the first award she ever wins. This was well-earned, and it is also a compliment to the Raypack Forensics Team, who, while she may have just won that national award, there were quite a few other students who have won awards throughout the year and deserve a lot of credit for that. Mr. Fairborn, yes, unfortunately, weird people like Joe and I do like to read those legal things, so if I could get a copy of that annual legal update, I will actually read that. Also, shout-out to Joe's Golf success, because I have attended attorney golfing outings, and that can be a real feat. I want to commend both of our appointments tonight, or three appointments. Thank you for your volunteer efforts with the city. And I also want to point out, we just got done talking about the license tax. A lot of people don't realize that that committee is made up also of citizen representatives, and I want to express my appreciation to Jack Hopkins and Kerry O'Connor, who also extended a great deal of effort on that. License taxing and excise taxes and contractor fees is something extremely exciting and riveting, and I, but, so I appreciate all the efforts they put toward for that and helping our city.
Thank you. Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to congratulate Ms. Ambam on her award, her competition-winning. Very nice to see her here, and I was hoping to hear her give us a little debate. She has very, done very well, and proud of her, and thank her for her abilities. Also, I'd like to thank Ms. Jenny Briggs for serving on the tree board in her reappointment. Congratulations. Also like to thank Ms. Jenny Sepola, thank you for agreeing and willingness to serve, and Mr. Sheldon Castleman for his appointment and willingness to serve on the park board also. I'd also say that I'm very pleased, and thank the council for their support with the roundabout feature, and it's, I'm, like I say, I'm happy. I'm happy tonight. Thank you, Mr. Wesco, thank you, Ms. Abdougouad, and Mr. Boehner, for all of your help on that, on that committee. It was a pleasure working with you, and I'm looking forward to working with you more as we go forward. And I'm just extremely happy about this, and looking forward, see where this goes. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Councilmember Wesco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm still holding out for a statue of me. I thought it was worth a try.
I thought there was supposed to be a statue of the mayor, right?
Well, or the mayor pro tem. I just, you know. You can't blame a guy for trying. I'm still trying to get a day named after me, you know, I'm kind of jealous of all the proclamations and the awards, you know, we've given it to Boy Scouts, and now Ms. Ambam, and it's like, I'm just a little jealous, I'm sorry. But I do want to congratulate her. I had the opportunity to see her perform at the Optimist Club banquet, and she did a very moving, dramatic piece, and, and again, when we heard that she had won, it's like, yeah, I could see that, you know, especially after seeing her perform. Had she come to debate us, we would have all looked like amateurs, so I'm glad that she did not do that. I had the opportunity to attend the Cass County Corporation of Economic Development's luncheon, and the director of that department was there and spoke, and he gave a very fascinating presentation, which I think Mr. Thompson emailed all of us to it. I encourage everybody to take a look at it. The one thing that I got from it is encourage third graders to get involved in STEM, which is science, technology, math, and engineering. Thank you. So, they said that, you know, there's thousands of jobs coming to the area. Unfortunately, they all are super, you know, technical, so encourage those areas. So, if there are any third graders watching, I don't even need to finish.
Third graders would be watching because of a penalty or something?
Oh, that could be, that could be. I also want to remind everybody that August fifth, you know, it's a week from Tuesday, we have the opportunity to go to the polls and exercise our right as citizens and elect our local officials, as well as vote on some amendments to our state, very, very important measures. So, I want to encourage everybody to exercise your right and get out and vote, because if you do not get out and vote, then basically what you do is you empower somebody else to make decisions for you. So, I want to encourage everybody to exercise their right and vote.
Councilmember Stevens?
No comments.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you, sir. Just one item, we had a lot of discussion on the roundabout, and I wanted to thank the roundabout committee for all the work that you did. I'm pretty impressed, and I think that's a good idea. Dovetailing off that, I've asked Mr. Fairborn to place on a future work session agenda kind of a dovetail of the project that Ms. Hubach brought up, and that would be to expand our use of signage and welcoming features to the city at the other entrances, and gave one example, it wasn't the best one, but asked staff to look into that, and then I've got some ideas as well. But, just kind of want to let everybody know, I think that's a good idea, not just to, as Mr. Morehead stated, to show off our city, but to define our city from our neighbor who, if you're not from here, it's tough to tell, sometimes belting from Raymore. So, I think it helps kind of define our entrances when you're here, and where we begin and end as far as our city limits. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Boehner?
I believe I've probably reached my quota for my daily public comment, so I will have no further comment.
You're using quota from the next meeting, then, okay. Councilmember Hubach?
Yes, I'm gonna, I wanted to discuss Aspen Street with you. In transportation, we've got three different programs. We've got the curb replacement, we've got the street preservation, and we've got the sidewalk. Under the sidewalk, you're wanting, the council is wanting to make some changes on Aspen Street. But Aspen has no curbs, it has no gutters, and we don't even know what the right-of-way is, it's not clearly defined. One side of the street is well-kept, the other side is not. There's even a huge log in the ditch that the city has let stay there. That street has not been properly maintained by the city, and that includes us asking for, to keep it brought up to date. And as a result, then, that there are saplings that have grown into trees there along the right-of-way, and there are vines growing where there should be some sort of grass. So, I would like to see us eliminate that street in this year's program, and go to another one, that street that needs to be repaired, and take a look at Aspen and see, because it needs more than just a sidewalk in there. There's a lot of problems. That is, if you're gonna call Raymore an area where has tourists, the only time we have tourists is when they're coming to the cemetery to fix the graves. And what they see then is a street that's not very well taken care of, and I'd like for all of you to go out and take a look at it, and then, I understand that Mr. Kateret is gonna give us a, something on the streets, on the gap plan, and that we could take a look at it then, because that's out in my area, and I'm not, I'll have to say, I'm not happy with the way that it looks. One side is well-kept, the other side is not well-kept, and both sides of it belong to the city.
Councilmember Abdougouad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, real quick, want to express appreciation from us one more time to the three new volunteers to our tree board and park board, and say thanks to the council for supporting that contract for the roundabout.
Thank you, and I'll echo all the kind comments everybody was giving to everybody earlier. I thought that I would actually have an item that nobody else would have, but Wesco grabbed it from me here. Thanks to Director Thompson for sending out the slideshow from the CCCED meeting, the Cass County Corporation of Economic Development. There was a lot of really interesting information in there, including the one part that I just, I was surprised, but it kind of makes sense, that they're forecasting that Cass County will be the sixth fastest-growing county in Missouri through 2030. So, we're gonna expect to see continued development here in Cass County. I sent out an email to the council last week about school road closing. A bit of an update on that, the engineering firm has pulled together everybody, sheriff, the chief powers, the school district, city staff, and the engineering firm, and a representative from the county will be meeting. I had hoped that it would have been this week to discuss the closing and what we're gonna be able to do with that portion of school road from Hubach to one hundred and ninety-fifth. Unfortunately, they can't meet this week, we're gonna be meeting next week. I am hoping that we see something from MoDOT, like a reduction on J Highway from fifty-five to thirty-five for that stretch there, maybe even some four-way stops, as our, that section of school road would be closed to commute traffic from, well, it was supposed to start July seventh, if I remember right, and I think they were a couple weeks behind, through January 2015, so there's gonna be some interesting reroutes of traffic. And I think that's all I have. We do not have reason to go in executive session tonight. I'll entertain a motion then to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, move that we adjourn our July twenty-eighth meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Is there any discussion? All in favor? We're adjourned.